Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Pappas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, if you're joining us here in person, and there are quite a few of you, thank you for being here. If you're joining us online, thank you for joining us and welcome to the meeting tonight. We have a very full meeting tonight, and a lot of students we want to congratulate. This is our budget meeting, so we'll pass a budget tonight, and so we have a lot to do. And with school out, not as much to say on my part. I did just want to give one shout-out tonight, and that's to George Oberleitner. And we want to give a shout-out to George because I don't know if it has escaped anyone else's attention, but our Nuggets are playing game five, a pivotal game in the NBA Finals tonight. And George normally does the Nuggets games. He runs, he does our video and our sound here in the district, but he also does that for Nuggets games and has been doing that for some time. And tonight, he has chosen to be with us and to be here at our meeting. And so, we just want to give a shout-out. There are a number of people that are always operating behind the scenes, people that you never see, but who are faithful and do such a wonderful job for this district. And so, George, we just want to say thank you for all that you do, but thank you especially for being with us here tonight. But those are all the announcements that I have tonight, and we need to approve an agenda to move forward.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is a public hearing on the proposed 2023-2024 district budget. And this is a time when someone could sign up to speak, how about no one has signed up to speak on the budget tonight? And so, we'll move right along to the next item on our agenda, and that's board member comments and reports. And Dr. Campos Spitsy, we'll start with you.
So, thank you guys for being here and also giving up the Nuggets game. But I wanted to start my personal comments tonight by wishing you all a happy Pride Month. Earlier this month, my family and I placed our rainbow flag on our front porch flag post, and I explained to my four and three-year-olds that this flag means that our family believes that you have the right to love whomever you choose. Even as preschoolers, they understand what I mean, since their own family doctor, also a family friend, who was at my bedside for both of their births and continues to see them for their annual checkups, is part of our queer community. I also explained to them that what makes our country and our city and our neighborhood and our schools great is that we believe that everyone belongs and that diversity makes us stronger. I teach them that being different shouldn't be scary and that being different doesn't mean you're dangerous. I've enjoyed seeing the rainbow banners at UNC and I'm proud of our Greeley City Council for their pride proclamation earlier this month. Our community's efforts to include all are not going unnoticed. With that said, I want to invite the District 6 community to a family-friendly pride celebration taking place at Ames Community College on July 29th, which is a Saturday from noon to six. Changing gears, I want to finish my comments by switching over to the budget, which we're going to be reviewing tonight. I want to just thank Megan Sponsler, our district's chief financial officer, and her team for their tremendous work on the budget. While the 228-page document is mainly made up of numbers and graphs and figures, having read through them and interpreted the data, it's clear to me that this document is an accountant's love letter to our students. One of the main reasons I joined the board was to make sure our district dollars were being distributed equitably, and I was so proud to see that equity was on the forefront of the minds of those who worked on our budget. I'll finish with a reminder about our summer food program that's going on from now until July 28th. So, as part of District 6, there will be free breakfast and free lunch at the following schools: Dos Rios, Anne K. Hyman, McCalliff, Maplewood, and Twinton for everyone 1 to 18 years old. This year, it's not pickup or delivery, you do eat in the cafeteria. And if you're over 18, you can also have access to the breakfast and lunch. For breakfast, adults would pay $2, and for lunch, adults would pay $4.50. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy, Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, in Nugget fashion, I will try to make this a little less wordy. I didn't prepare anything as fancy as Brenda, but it's been slow. Graduation season's basically over, but since the last meeting, I went to university's graduation. We almost got rained out, got a little bit delayed, but they did a great job. And yeah, just a big shout-out to Megan Sponsler and her whole team. They always do a great job. Makes our job very easy to decipher and have confidence in what the district's doing with the taxpayer dollars. So, thank you, guys, and go Nuggets.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley, Ms. Mash.
So, yes, the summer is a little bit slower for our board work, but I have a couple of things I wanted to point out that I've gotten to experience as a parent. And first of all, is our internship program here at District 6. Some of you may know, we had over 200 students apply to have a paid internship in a business in Greeley-Evans that might fit what they want to do as a post-graduate opportunity. So, my daughter is getting to do an internship at the brand-new Link, and she felt like she won the lottery with that. We are so thankful for her school counselor who knows her so well and knew that she would be interested in working with the recording studio and the podcasting studio there, as well as she enjoys children and she gets to help with the art there. So, she's, you know, been, it's her second week. She's gotten to run the, you know, the children's museum upstairs. She's gotten to do painting projects. She says she gets a little sick being in the gaming room because there's these giant screens where you can play Xbox and if you get a little bit motion sickness. But so, a huge thank you to Nelson Rodriguez and his team that forms those partnerships with the businesses in our community. I believe Mr. Bentley said he has an intern at his business as well. And then, also, my daughter got to participate in drum major camp at UNC this last weekend, and I believe the drum majors from Greeley West High School were there as well. It was a two-and-a-half-day intensive where they learned all about conducting, marching, and leadership skills, because those drum majors, you know, they lead their high school bands. And it was, as we know from UNC, they have an amazing music program, world-renowned professors and instruction. So, just again, the amazing partnerships that we have with our other educational entities here in Greeley and the benefits that we get from living in a university town. And then, I also would like to wish all of our students, staff, and families within the LGBTQ+ community a happy Pride Month. District 6 values and celebrates diversity. Every person who interacts with District 6 inside or outside of our school should feel welcome, seen, and safe. And I'm committed to continuing to work to ensure that this is, in fact, the experience of the LGBTQ+ community within District 6.
Thank you, Ms. Mash.
Mr. Norwood?
Thank you, Mr. President. It was a very busy graduation season. We still do have one more gap, June 24th, I believe. There's one more, so if any of you want to attend, make sure you put that on your calendar. If I said "go Heat" tonight, would anybody get mad at me because I'd like to watch a game? So, go Nuggets!
Ms. Pappas?
I would like to say that I don't know how many schools are offering summer school. Can you answer that question, Dr. Pelch? Sorry. You don't need to tell me.
I do not know precisely how many schools are offering summer school, but there's programs across the district. Everybody has, everybody is offering, but not at every site because of construction. But every student, school has an opportunity for summer school, is that correct? All right, we'll get you something in your bulletin also about summer school.
No, honestly, that's not what's important. What's important is that I really just want to thank the staff, the administrators and staff for providing the summer school opportunity for our kids. I just, today, just driving by some places, watching kids out on the street, and I just think it's just an amazing opportunity that we give to our families to have summer school. And yes, I know there's the reason for them to learn, but it's also the opportunity for them to just be someplace. And as Dr. Campos Spitsy said, it's also the opportunity to get some meals. And so, I really appreciate that, I'm grateful for that. And also, thank you to the nutrition staff for providing those meals to our kids. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And I don't have much to add to their comments, but I will jump off of what Dr. Campos Spitsy and Ms. Pappas said. The meals that are provided by our nutrition team during the summer are extremely important for the kids in this district. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but the World Food Bank is seeing more people every month.
Our Nuggets are playing game five, a pivotal game in the NBA Finals tonight. And George normally does the Nuggets games. He runs, he does our video and our sound here in the district, but he also does that for Nuggets games and has been doing that for some time. And tonight he has chosen to be with us and to be here at our meeting. And so we just want to give a shout out. There are a number of people that are always operating behind the scenes, people that you never see, but who are faithful and do such a wonderful job for this district. And so, George, we just want to say thank you for all that you do, but thank you especially for being with us here tonight. But those are all the announcements that I have tonight, and we need to approve an agenda to move forward.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented. Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is a public hearing on the proposed 2023-2024 district budget. And this is a time when someone could sign up to speak, how about no one has signed up to speak on the budget tonight. And so we'll move right along to the next item on our agenda, and that's board member comments and reports. And Dr. Campos Spitsy, we'll start with you.
So thank you guys for being here and also giving up the Nuggets game. But I wanted to start my personal comments tonight by wishing you all a happy Pride Month. Earlier this month, my family and I placed our rainbow flag on our front porch flag post, and I explained to my four and three-year-olds that this flag means that our family believes that you have the right to love whomever you choose. Even as preschoolers, they understand what I mean, since their own family doctor, also a family friend, who was at my bedside for both of their births and continues to see them for their annual checkups, is part of our queer community. I also explained to them that what makes our country and our city and our neighborhood and our schools great is that we believe that everyone belongs and that diversity makes us stronger. I teach them that being different shouldn't be scary and that being different doesn't mean you're dangerous. I've enjoyed seeing the rainbow banners at UNC and am proud of our Greeley City Council for their pride proclamation earlier this month. Our community's efforts to include all are not going unnoticed. With that said, I want to invite the District Six community to a family-friendly pride celebration taking place at Ames Community College on July 29th, which is a Saturday from noon to six. Changing gears, I want to finish my comments by switching over to the budget, which we're going to be reviewing tonight. I want to just thank Megan Sponsler, our district's chief financial officer, and her team for their tremendous work on the budget. While the 228-page document is mainly made up of numbers and graphs and figures, having read through them and interpreted the data, it's clear to me that this document is an accountant's love letter to our students. One of the main reasons I joined the board was to make sure our district dollars were being distributed equitably, and I was so proud to see that equity was on the forefront of the minds of those who worked on our budget. I'll finish with a reminder about our summer food program that's going on from now until July 28th. So as part of District Six, there will be free breakfast and free lunch at the following schools: Dos Rios, Anne K. Hyman, Chris McAuliffe, Maplewood, and Twinton for everyone 1 to 18 years old. This year, it's not pickup or delivery, you do eat in the cafeteria. And if you're over 18, you can also have access to the breakfast and lunch. For breakfast, adults would pay $2, and for lunch, adults would pay $4.50. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, in Nugget fashion, I will try to make this a little less wordy. I didn't prepare anything as fancy as Brenda, but it's been slow. Graduation season's basically over. Since the last meeting, I went to university's graduation. We almost got rained out, got a little bit delayed, but they did a great job. And yeah, just a big shout out to Megan Sponsler and her whole team. They always do a great job. Makes our job very easy to decipher and have confidence in what the district's doing with the taxpayer dollars. So thank you, guys, and go Nuggets.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley, Ms. Mash.
So yes, the summer is a little bit slower for our boardwork, but I have a couple of things I wanted to point out that I've gotten to experience as a parent. And first of all, is our internship program here at District Six. Some of you may know, we had over 200 students apply to have a paid internship in a business in Greeley-Evans that might fit what they want to do as a post-graduate opportunity. So my daughter is getting to do an internship at the brand-new Link, and she felt like she won the lottery with that. We are so thankful for her school counselor, who knows her so well and knew that she would be interested in working with the recording studio and the podcasting studio there, as well as she enjoys children and she gets to help with the art there. So she's, you know, been, it's her second week. She's gotten to run the, you know, the children's museum upstairs. She's gotten to do painting projects. She says she gets a little sick being in the gaming room because there's these giant screens where you can play Xbox and if you get a little bit motion sickness. But so a huge thank you to Nelson Rodriguez and his team that forms those partnerships with the businesses in our community. I believe Mr. Bentley said he has an intern at his business as well. And then also, my daughter got to participate in drum major camp at UNC this last weekend, and I believe the drum majors from Greeley West High School were there as well. It was a two-and-a-half-day intensive where they learned all about conducting, marching, and leadership skills, because those drum majors, you know, they lead their high school bands. And it was, as we know from UNC, they have an amazing music program, world-renowned, you know, professors and instruction. So just again, the amazing partnerships that we have with our other educational entities here in Greeley and the benefits that we get from living in a university town. And then I also would like to wish all of our students, staff, and families within the LGBTQ+ community a happy Pride Month. District Six values and celebrates diversity. Every person who interacts with District Six inside or outside of our school should feel welcome, seen, and safe, and I'm committed to continuing to work to ensure that this is, in fact, the experience of the LGBTQ+ community within District Six.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Mr. Norwood.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was a very busy graduation season. We still do have one more gap, June 24th, I believe. There's one more, so if any of you want to attend, make sure you put that on your calendar. If I said go Heat tonight, would anybody get mad at me because I'd like to watch a game? So go Nuggets.
Ms. Pappas.
I would like to say that I don't know how many schools are offering summer school. Can you answer that question, Dr. Pilch? Sorry. You don't need to tell me.
I do not know precisely how many schools are offering summer school, but there's programs across the district. Everybody is offering, but not at every site because of construction. But every student, school has an opportunity for summer school. Is that correct? All right. We'll get you something in your bulletin also about summer school.
No, honestly, that's not what's important. What's important is that I really just want to thank the staff, the administrators and staff for providing the summer school opportunity for our kids. I just, today, just driving by some places, watching kids out on the street, and I just think it's just an amazing opportunity that we give to our families to have summer school. And yes, I know there's the reason for them to learn, but it's also the opportunity for them to just be someplace. And as Dr. Campos Spitsy said, it's also the opportunity to get some meals. And so I really appreciate that. I'm grateful for that. And also thank you to the nutrition staff for providing those meals to our kids. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And I don't have much to add to their comments, but I will jump off of what Dr. Campos Spitsy and Ms. Pappas said. The meals that are provided by our nutrition team during the summer are extremely important for the kids in this district. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but the World Food Bank is seeing more people every month. They are setting new records for the people that they see. And knowing them and seeing them often, they're extremely grateful for our nutrition service team and for the work that we do. So I just want to give a shout out to Danielle and to that group and to say thank you for continuing to feed our students during the summer. And that's all that I have. And comments and reports, and we're now to our work session report.
The work session began with a board candidate orientation to provide information to people interested in running for the school board. After a short recess, the board reviewed upcoming events. Chief Financial Officer Megan Sponsler provided an overview of the proposed 2023-2024 budget. The work session concluded with a debrief from each board member and the council of student representatives.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on the agenda is our budget adoption, and this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approve the proposed budget for the 2023-24 fiscal year. This includes a total appropriation of $518,573,637. The transfer of funds from the general fund and the use of beginning fund balance when where required, as presented in the proposed budget document.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we open this up for questions and comments from board members, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to present to us?
You all received a pretty comprehensive report during the work session. Ms. Sponsler is here to open up the presentation for you and to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Sponsler? Sponsler, I'm not seeing any. This is a first ever that you've come to the podium and not had any questions or comments. People have already said thank you, both in the work session and in here. And I will just summarize those thanks and say just how much we do appreciate you for this budget and for all the work that you do. Have a unique gift and love for the school district and are able to prioritize the right things and also fiscally conservative, which keeps us in the black and makes sure that we're not out over our skis. And so on behalf of the board, I just want to say how much we appreciate you and your entire team and for the budget that you've given us. And so thank you very much. And Ms. Lemon, I think we're ready for a vote.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next tonight, we have our superintendents on a roll, and so, Dr. Pilch, I will hand this over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I shared with you at our last board meeting, we are going to change up, I was going to change up my superintendent comments a little bit to include this portion of time where we actually recognize and honor students, staff, community members. So first, I want to recognize our recommendation for you tonight for the position of Director of Cultural Excellence and Family Engagement. I'd like to introduce to you Jay Luis Comas. There you are, Luis. Thank you. Thanks for attending tonight. I do hope you approve him, because I understand he was already working with our team today down at an all-week-long conference that is occurring in Denver. And so we're really glad to welcome Luis to the district. He has experienced an elementary education as an assistant principal. He has been a principal of a dual-language immersion school, and he also most recently comes to us from Adams 14, where he brought a school, an elementary school, out of turnaround status. So I think he's going to deeply understand the work here in District Six and be an amazing asset here, and we're so glad to have you, Luis. Welcome to District Six pending Board of Education approval tonight. All right. I think I have Mr. Osmus, our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leadership, coming with a group of students. We're going to recognize some of our state qualifiers and state winners tonight. This is new for us. We have typically only recognized students who received state or national awards, and we've decided to expand that a bit and bring more students in front of you. And I see they're sporting their T-shirts and their jackets. And so, Mr. Osmus, as the students come forward, I know parents and family, I know you're going to want to get some pictures. Feel free to do that, and we're just excited to begin to celebrate our students. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Osmus.
President Matthews, I'm ever so honored to talk to you. This is a big night. We are happy to celebrate just our state qualifiers and our state champions from the second half of this year. So we have had some great success in our schools, and we are just so happy and so proud of these students and appreciate them coming out on a night when they could be probably trying to watch the Nuggets game. So we'll try to get through this a little bit. What we'll try to have them do is I'm going to introduce their ADs or their coaches. They'll tell a little bit about their season, introduce their students, and then students or athletes, I'll have you go in the middle here, and we're going to do one picture. Once you've been introduced, we'll come to the middle and do one picture at the end. So I'm just so proud of all these students. We'll start with our Greeley West athletes, and we'll start with girls tennis.
All right. Thank you, guys, for having us. What an honor it is to be here tonight. I'm Coach Pace over from Greeley West Tennis, and we have three of our four state qualifiers here, so Dave McKinney, Kalen Jennings, and Gabri Anderson.
I'll let them get their picture, and I'll start talking about our. One big picture, okay. I'm Kelly Long, I teach at Greeley West High School. I'm an instructor of the Agriculture Education Program. My students have spent the last seven months preparing for the district and state parliamentary procedure contest. They won the district contest in January. They represented us at state last week in June in Plublo. They won the state contest, and they're now headed to the national contest. They'll join 49 other teams vying for the title of being the national champs of the parliamentary procedure team. We have our chairman, Aiden Dattery, our secretary, Katie Childers, and then our other team members, Tucker Hurley, Caitlin Fenton, Anna Gibson, and Sarah Porter. We're missing our alternate, Autumn Schrupner, but they could tell you just about anything about parliamentary law there is, because they took a 100-point test on it, and they broke the state record. They dropped seven points total in the entire testing contest and won the demonstration hands-down in a five-to-one vote.
Good evening. My name is Colin Sheahey. I teach at Greeley West High School. I've been coaching the swimming there for a long time. We have a few athletes here this afternoon, this evening. Max Spooner, Devin Casadis, Ian Spooner, and Jaden England. Max and Ian were part of a school-record 200 freestyle relay. We went into that event just trying to do the best we possibly could. We didn't really have the school record on our radar, but they, you know, they're amazing teammates, and they trust everybody, and that's how we always find success, is making the person next to you better. And these young men certainly represent that.
And I'm not sure we have anybody from Greeley West Track here, but want to just recognize Cody Billings. Is that right? Nobody from Greeley West Track, and check in. And athletes that made it to track this year from Greeley West, Yasmin Adam, Jaime Baghdadi, Daniel Sandoval, and Corbin Wong. So congratulations to the Greeley West Track team as well for making that one. At this point, I'll turn this over to our North Ridge athletes.
I don't know. One big one, I think, is what we're thinking about.
All right. Good evening. Jeff Collins, Athletic Director, North Ridge High School. We had a great spring. I want to recognize girls soccer, baseball, girls golf, and boys and girls track and field. We've got a couple of kids here today. I've got a different plan. I want to let Coach Lundstrom talk a little bit. But as with team sports, you know, we don't always end the way we want. It wasn't a happy ending, and that's kind of the way it works, but still getting there, I think, is quite an accomplishment. So I wanted to recognize girls soccer today, and Riley Beck has a few words she wants to say.
So we took second in our league this year, and we have never lost a conference or league game. We have tied two league games in four years. And then we were ranked number 17 in the playoff out of 32? Yeah, 32. And unfortunately, we lost the first round two to one, but it was a hard-fought battle. So, yeah.
It was cold and rainy that day, too.
Yeah, it was very stormy. So, yeah.
Coach Lundstrom?
Good job. Good job, guys.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity and honoring all the kids, as well as the coaches. I don't know what we do, but the kids. It's all about the success of these young people and getting recognized, so thank you for that honor. With me tonight, I have Reese Pratt and Isaac Ness. And I'm going to go through, I've got just a note card of other athletes that are not here, track with all the numbers and everything. It's too much for my head to handle. So our girls team, we only had one girl qualify for state, and I don't know if many of you know how state works, but they take the top 18, and then they compete the first day, they try to get through the top nine, and then after they kind of get rid of the top nine, then the, or excuse me, the bottom nine, the top nine, then will compete to try to place later on. So Savannah Amack, she took first in state in the triple jump. She jumped 37.3, which was pretty incredible. And that's, yeah. She also placed eighth place in the long jump, and then she qualified for the 300-meter hurdles, but she didn't place in that. For the boys team, we had our four-by-one team. These two fellows right here make up two of them. Mr. Osmus' son, Brayden, and Jaden Marquez are not here today, but they set school records as well as in the four-by-one, they took second place, and then in the four-by-two, they took first place, which was pretty incredible. Reese, Jaden, and Brayden qualified in the 100. Reese took seventh place overall, and then in the 200, Brayden took ninth place in the 200-meter open. Then we, Cody Burkholder, who's not here tonight, in shot put, he took sixth place, throwing 45 feet, three and three-quarter inches. That's a big throw. And then my son, who's not here, he's working tonight. He qualified for state. I just, quick brag moment, since I have the mic. He was, he actually qualified, again, they take the top 18. He was tied for 18th, and he ended up taking sixth overall, well, tied for sixth overall. So really proud of him and just the team that we have. You know, every person in here understands what adversity is, and these kids standing here in this spotlight to get recognized, you know they face some sort of challenge along the way, and all well-deserved. So thank you for your time. Reese, wanted to say one thing real fast.
You know, when they talk about track, it's not usually a team sport, but this year, for at least me and the three other guys in my relay team, it was. I was along with three great guys. And just throwing athletic ability to the side, they've got great hearts, great minds, and I've got no doubt that they're going to have some bright futures. So track's one of those sports that everyone says you play, you run it, so it's only you that can help yourself out of the situation you got yourself into. And we got ourselves out of the situation with the state championship and a couple of school records, so can't complain about that.
One more student today, Jade Heppler. She is one of our girls golfers. North Ridge hosts girls golf for the entire town of Greeley, and she was a state qualifier along with Claire, who couldn't make it tonight, but I wanted to recognize Jade. And while I have the mic, I did want to recognize our senior group. We're up to 19 now, student athletes that have committed or signed college offers to play next year, so that's a bunch. So good for those 19. And like I said, baseball's not here today, coach is out of town, and all the kids just, they separate once the school year gets out, so we couldn't get anybody here. But another good year, I think 16th or 17th seed, similar to girls soccer, won the first regional game and just couldn't get past the number-one team in the state. So congratulations to them, and thank you.
Hi, my name is Ray Cordero. This is my assistant, Ken, and our players didn't show up. But I do want to say, I'm the head coach for the Greeley Central Boys Volleyball Program, and this is our second season that we got the program, and we went 20-5, made regionals. And I did get one student to sign at college, playing in South Carolina. But I do want to encourage everyone else, we're the only boys program, so if you've got any sons, nephews that's going to high school, please, and interested in learning the game of volleyball, please send them my way to Greeley Central. They don't have to know the game. We will teach them the game and the skills. Just come out and enjoy themselves.
And just a few more representing university. I just want to say I know their boys baseball team, and got second in state, so congratulations to their baseball team. And then also I have with me tonight from university track is Teddy Roth, who is the state champion in the pole vault. So congratulations, Teddy.
The board members are on their way?
Yeah. Oh, we got to go this way, I guess. Pretty nuts. Pretty cool. Do you guys want in? Do you guys want in here somewhere? It could be in the front.
We're not going to stand in front of this.
You go down.
Here. Here. There you go. All right. Thank you.
Here's your ball. Put it up here and stand.
Yep. Get nice and close. Get right up in there, yeah.
I can sing. I'm nervous if you want to. I want, I would say, I want to, I think I should share that.
Again, congratulations to all of our state qualifiers and state champions. I think we had every high school represented except maybe perhaps one charter school, and so it's amazing to see. That is, it's an incredible commitment to stay on top of. to, to stay on top of, of everything that you need to do in high school. Uh, it's a tremendous load just in and of itself, and then to be able to, to balance that with, with swimming, or track, or volleyball, or, or the different sports that our athletes do, and a lot of them do more than, more than one sport, it's amazing accomplishment, so, um, congratulations again to, to those state qualifiers and state champions. Next on our agenda is public participation. Uh, the board welcomes the comments of community members and has dedicated a portion of each business meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments to the board. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. The board typically does not engage in discussion or provide an immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our board secretary and not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect. And we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speaker's remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. All speakers and those in attendance shall conduct themselves in a non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. Um, with that read, tonight our first speaker is Ms. Stacy Castillo. Welcome, Ms. Castillo. Thank you for being here tonight, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm not as good at reading in public as, um, one of the other ladies, but, a book I wanted to read, Johnny the Walrus. Johnny's a boy with a big imagination. One day he's a dog, the next a crustacean. One morning he came downstairs barking and clapping, wood spoons for tusks, and sock fens a flapping. "I'm Johnny the Walrus," he said with a roar. "The woods floor is my ocean, the carpet's my shore." Johnny's mom loves her son's make-believe time. "You're Johnny the Walrus till you change your mind." But Johnny's mom's phone said it's not just pretend, only a bigot would say that, how dare you offend? Mommy was told to take Johnny for a checkup, you'll need to eat worms and to put on gray makeup. The worms give you whiskers, the gray blends you end, and a simple procedure cuts feet into fens. "It's gross eating worms, Mom, they're all so twitchy, wood spoons kinda hurt, and that makeup is itchy." Deep down Johnny's mom knew that something was wrong, but she felt so much pressure, she just went along. The internet people knew just what to do, and mommy was told to take John to the zoo. When Johnny arrived, the walruses grunted. "My boy's a real walrus, he's, his growth was just stunted." The zookeeper thought, "What is she talking about? Ma'am, that's just a boy with wooden spoons in his mouth, but if I believe that, they'll say that I'm phobic." Pretending your son, ma'am, protecting your son, ma'am, is what's most heroic. At last Johnny's mommy was able to see that Johnny's not what he's pretending to be. Now mommy ignores the mean things on her phone while Johnny pretends he's a bird flying home. The end.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next tonight, we have Ms. Angelica Weiss. Welcome, Ms. Weiss, thank you for being here, you'll have two minutes.
Um, I was gonna, I had some prepared, but I'm gonna say something different just because of what's been going on. Um, I had a mom tell me a story about her pre-teen daughter who was in the hallway with her very best friend, and they were kinda cuddling close, linking arms, and maybe one of them, I think, was resting her head on the other shoulder, when a teacher stopped and said, "Oh, I'm so proud of you two, you guys are so cute together." Now, these are pre-teen girls that were sexualizing, and I don't know about you, but I, when I was that age, I was close with my friends, and there might've been physical contact, as friends should be able to do without sexualizing pre-teen girls. And what I see tonight in this boardroom, with your pins and your shirts, you're also perpetuating that same thing in this very boardroom, where this is no place. It is no place for children, and I don't know about you, but I was able to teach my children to love everybody despite who they have sex with, that did not come up in the conversation. I didn't need to. You love everybody because you're created by God equally and as wonderful as everybody else, and that's it. That doesn't need to be explained to a two and four-year-old. And to sexualize pre-teens like this by a teacher, it was mortifying and embarrassing for them to have a teacher speak to them like that. And now, what are girls supposed to do with their friendships? Don't touch me because a teacher might think we're dating? That's ridiculous, and something needs to be done about that, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Next tonight, we have Ms. Maria Foster. Welcome, Ms. Foster, thank you for being here tonight, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch, members of the board. Without realizing, people have already touched on some of the nutrition policies in the district, and I just wanna commend the board for their decision that when the COVID funding ran out, that you continued to offer free meals to all students. I was recently listening to a TED Talk by Sam Cass, who was a White House chef and a food policy, um, advisor, and he noted that in schools where free breakfast and lunch were offered to all students regardless of income, so you did not have the stigmatizing effect of some people qualifying for meals and other people not, that reading and math scores improved by 17 and a half percent, and that research shows that kids that have a consistent nutritious breakfast improve their chances of graduating 20%. So I think that offering, continuing to offer nutritious meals is not only the compassionate and humane thing to do, it's clearly the very practical thing to do if we want our students to excel. And I don't know anyone, whether a student or an adult, who does their best work if they're hungry or undernourished. So I believe it is not just the instruction that goes on in the classroom, but is imperative that the district look at, how can you prepare students to be capable of learning, to be ready for their jobs, and that means addressing their physical, emotional, and social needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Mr. Steve Grant, Stephen Grant. Welcome, Mr. Grant, thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Um, I am a resident of this area, uh, part of District Six, um, have upcoming grandch- grandchildren that may never be a part of this district because of your anti-Christian, anti-cultural values. I've been reading the books that you've been reviewing, and as a minister and somebody with a biblical counseling background, I've had to counsel people that have been traumatized by these books even as adults, and you are allowing them within our district. And if you never say no, then your yes doesn't matter, you're merely permissive and pushing an agenda, and that is my concern with what you are doing. My concern is also with the buttons for homosexual pride, supporting perversion, anti-scientific, anti-Christ, and what you're doing is fostering an agenda in this area that is against this. I wanna know when you're going to have a pro-Christian heritage historic celebration month here in the district, you've not had one. I wanna know when you're going to support the values of the majority instead of the minority. I wanna know when you're going to support these types of things and push that type of an agenda. What you're doing right now is pushing obscenity and perversion. I've had to counsel, and I've had to deal with some of the aftermath of what you're pushing, and there's blood on your hands because of it.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Next tonight, we have Mr. Steve Teetz.
It's been a while, my name is Steve Teetz, I'm in Greeley, District Six. Um, I wasn't gonna mention about this, but I've been seeing things on TV, new, it's in the news, and it's just not, uh, District Six has the, uh, having books that aren't, uh, we'll just say age-appropriate. Uh, there was one time watching the news, and it was, there was a district in Florida, and in that, you think it gets rough here, uh, they showed, it really got rough, uh, that district in Florida. And then there was another news thing about that, and I think, uh, about inappropriate books. We didn't have to worry about that when I was a kid, and probably my parents didn't either. And I think that w- w- we, w- w- basically, our society is going the wrong way, and we need to teach our kids the other way, uh, what's righteous, what, what, uh, is, how to live with each other, and we're corrupt enough, we don't need to teach, we need to teach what's right, and so they can have a quality of life. Um, as I said, that, uh, it's important to teach, uh, morals, it's important to teach the ABCs and it's, uh, and the 1, 2, 3s, and even our history, and even, uh, get them prepared in high school for some kind of job. I just want you to rethink, uh, and I agree with Mr. Grant there, that we need to re- uh, research and then also, too, reexamine ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teetz. Next tonight, we have Mr. Edwin Grant. Welcome, Mr. Grant, thank you for being here tonight, you'll have two minutes.
Good evening, school board. Uh, I'm a visual aids kinda guy. Edwin Wayne Grant, 11th Avenue and 16th Street, 2221 10th Avenue, 13, 14-
Mr. Grant, uh, we, I'm just gonna let you know upfront, we, we can't have visual aids, uh-
Oh, okay.
I mean, bigger than a, bigger than a sheet of paper, just so you know, okay?
Oh, this is Greeley Tribune.
Okay, well, still, I mean, we, just as a rule, we don't have visual aids, just wanna let you know. Thank you.
All right, well, eh, I'm currently 2411 27th Avenue Place, I, I have this book here, I'm sure your schoolteachers would love it, The Manufactured Crisis, it's about people who homeschool and so on, take money away from the public schools even though they do pay taxes. This book here is by Aristotle, rather famous Greek philosopher back 2,400 years ago, and in the politics, he says that government employees always corrupt governments. Hey, they, he wasn't the only one that did that, this is China, Confucius and Mencius also noticed that in China, even though they have a civil service system there. Uh, I'd like to take you up to 1800 with Jean Jacques Rousseau. He wrote The Social Contract, we all think we're self-determined, we aren't, we get a county birth certificate, we're rammed through life on a gr- on a government deal until we get a county, um, death certificate. We are a lot less self-determined than what we think we are. Anyway, I would like to talk about my personal house. I was valued at fair market value by a licensed appraiser from a bank and also a realty company that puts me at $430,000. However, the Well County School District Six, which is done by the, uh, Well County Assessor's Office, uh, their gal, Dones, and their treasury appri- uh, put me at $510,000, 80,000 more than the fair market value. I'm with 100,000 taxpayers like that who have been in this area, uh, the county, and 100 million taxpayers across the country who have had this, uh, 10, 20, 30% overcharges on their tax bills for their property. We have 40,000 metropolitan taxing districts, 80,000, uh, special taxing like districts like this. Are we gonna get that tax refund or not?
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Thank you to our public speakers tonight. We, next on our agenda is our consent agenda, and we'll need a motion to move forward.
A move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes officers to sign any and all contracts. Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion, Ms. Mash, did you have a question or a comment on the consent agenda?
I, I always enjoy looking at the personnel report, I don't know, it's just fun to see who's coming into the district, and we, there has been a national shortage of bus drivers, but we're hiring two bus drivers, so that's super exciting. Yay, bus drivers.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Any other comment, discussion on the consent agenda? Singing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Fitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our bond update, and so, Dr. Pilch, I will give this one to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. Mr. Kent Henson, Assistant Superintendent of Support Services, has prepared a bond update for you as we go into the summer months, this is our busiest time with the bond, and we are, we're about two-thirds the way through our, our full bond, um, implementation, and we're excited to share with you the work that's occurring right now, and the work that is, has been done most recently, and what's coming up next. Thank you, Mr. Henson.
Okay, thank you, President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, and Board of Education. So, with this, uh, bond update, what I'm gonna attempt to do is, uh, show you what's going on this summer as you're driving around town, whi- which is our busiest summer, uh, since we started the bond issue. So this, uh, you see a lot of spread, spreadsheets here, and I don't necessarily expect that you can read them all unless you can see them on your screen, but these are the brought bond projects that we set out from the beginning of the bond, the order in which we were gonna do, uh, our projects. And the only thing that's changed on here is you'll see the width of the bands, um, whereas we started with some of our summer work, where we could start in March and with hiring, uh, general contractors, and then have things mostly finished by August, no more. Pretty much everything now, we have to start a year ahead of time, and it takes two years to get through the process, mostly because of planning for lead times. But you'll notice, we call this the will-be summer, um, so if you see all those will-bes on there, will be complete, uh, there are currently, we have 14 buildings that we're working on. So you mentioned summer school earlier, uh, about the importance of summer school, and as a former principal, I understand and know the importance of summer school, so I had the pleasure this November of emailing the 14 will-be principals and saying, "Guess what, you can't have summer school in your building this summer." That always ended up with 14 individual responses back to me. Can I have it in my building? The answer's no, and then 14 responses back, "Are you sure?" Yes. So, uh, I do appreciate the added work that the principals and schools have done, and transportation of having pickup spots at schools and transferring kids to other buildings, because we simply cannot have, uh, summer school in some of these buildings, because we have almost 300 educational spaces or offices that look like this. So this picture was taken about six days after the last day of school at Greeley Central, uh, this is the demolition season, uh, we, as soon as kids were out, teachers were packed, we started giving them boxes so they could pack out of those 14 buildings, because as we're renovating classrooms, you can't put carpet in a room if there's stuff in there. So, um, we had a process, uh, where there was a lot of work that was done like that, and those 300 spaces are only in those buildings, and this does not include any of our new builds, which are not done yet. So those at Madison classrooms, those at Meeker and Martinez Elementary, um, those numbers aren't included in there. So this also, um, this, this is, you don't have to read the lines, but there's 31 moves there. So in order to get in these classrooms, starting on the Thursday, last day of school, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, while you were at graduations, there's 31 moves going on behind the scenes of either getting things from one building to another, or getting things from classrooms into gyms so they can be stored, so they're moved back. So it was a huge coordinated effort that we spent most of the winter, uh, getting this together, uh, so we could go in and demo those classrooms. So now, a quick just preview, just with some pictures, uh, fun time here, so, uh, James Madison Steam Academy, uh, will open this fall, uh, as a pre-K, um, eight building, and these are just some pictures of the finishes, you'll see a new science classroom, that'll be new as Madison moves from a K5 to a pre-K8. Middle school science is new for that program, and you can see a new science classroom on the left, and then they have a maker space in the lower right, and then you can see the new kitchen off the cafeteria, common space there on the left, and then beautiful gym there that, uh, they'll be able to support middle school athletics for the first time, um, as again, they moved to K8, and with the stage in the background. Um, and then learning commons here on the left, and then that picture on the right is just a new classroom. So I think an important thing to remember as we go through and renovate buildings, most of our buildings, almost 80% of our buildings, depending on where we are with our technology upgrades, which we started with MLO about four years ago, will end up with this configuration with the view sonic board in the middle, two whiteboards, and so we talk about equity across learning spaces in the district, um, will be there. One thing that we have been fighting on the James Madison Project is we're finally getting power tomorrow, and we're- And we're only about five weeks behind on that. So one of our local power providers, which will remain nameless, has struggled a little bit getting down 4th Street and has really held up our progress. But they will be there tomorrow. And that is huge for us to complete this project. Franklin Middle School, if you go by, we did the building renovation, the classroom renovations last summer. But we needed to come back and do an addition to the office. They literally had people in closets without even a plug to plug in a lamp. Extension cord running around the corner. So we're doing an office addition there to increase the adult spaces and to also incorporate their secure vestibule. This will be done this fall. And then Heath Middle School. This picture shows quite a bit of things going on here. But there are three additions to this building. The new wood shop, which you can see in pink in the upper left, and the new choir room. Those will be open this fall and ready for students. The new entrance and addition in the middle of the horseshoe, which will have the new office, the new secure vestibule. It'll have a new art room. It'll have a Smart Lab space and a conference room and a clinic area. That will be ready by Thanksgiving to open up. And then the little colored pictures that you see in twos through the existing footprint, that is where using Esser money during the school year, we replaced unit ventilators in those rooms and then went through and did carpet and paint in those classrooms. So we worked in this building throughout the school year, worked with the principal, moving two classrooms of kids at a time throughout the building through a swing space. And so we're able to get quite a bit of work done during the school year there. And then these are pictures. On the left is the new wood shop off the back. And in the middle is that new office area in the horseshoe with the new choir room there on the right. And then this is a building looking out the art room toward the courtyard. And then the room on the right is the new wood shop. The teachers are not crazy about purple paint, the purple paint, but it is their school color. So I'm sure you'll get used to it. And then at the former Jefferson High School site, which will next year be the Jefferson Junior High School in District 6 Student Access Center. You can see I've outlined in red there. That will be the part of the building which will house Jefferson Junior High. And then the part in the green will hold the Student Access Center. So our Transitions Program, our Child Fine Program, our Auditory Program, our SWAC Program, there's one other that I forgot, will go into that area over there in the green. And so we have quite a bit of renovation to do in this building to make sure that we're separating the two programs and have two entrances in this. But this is moving along quite well. And this will mostly be done by the fall. And then Greeley Central High School, the castle, which is coming up on 100 years shortly, 100 years old. We're putting a new secure vestibule on the north side there. That will be incorporated with the breezeway that goes to the west. We're waiting on aluminum and glass, which is a common theme throughout our buildings. And then these are pictures of work we did there for career and college readiness. This is the marketing classroom with also a school store in the back. That was done in the historic library. And you can see there, we had an opportunity to restore the wood floors. We wanted to do it in at least one spot in that building. And then this was a business classroom that we did last year. And then the rest of that building should be done by August. We may have some entrances, aluminum glass, that we have to finish through the school year. And then Meeker Elementary Edition. We have some additions that are going on this year. We have worked with Demographer on our populations, student populations when we opened the Toynham Academy. And so we knew we were in a position here where Meeker's population is stable. And so again, one of our goals is to get rid of portable classrooms and move students inside. And so we have a classroom addition here that also brings pre-K into the building. And so this has gone quite well, and this will be ready this fall. If you wanna know what a preschool toilet looks like, there it is on the right. They're way low and just no way. Martinez Elementary is also getting a classroom addition as we get ready to take down a portable next week. So you can see here on the left, those wooden doors are where we opened up the art classroom into the new wing. So it kinda connects the old building to the new. And there again, on the right, you can see a 5th grade classroom with kind of a familiar look to it. And then these are the new bathrooms and just some of the new wings, new classrooms there that we're waiting to move into. Then New Jefferson High School, CTE Center here. This picture's a little bit old. Parts of it look the same today. What has changed on the outside is we have the metal paneling up around the outside and have come a lot further in terms of completion on the inside. The problem has been that every day it rains, it pushes our parking lot backwards about three days. And so when's the last day it hasn't rained? It's been a long time. So when we drive by this, we really need to get through the weather here to get this parking lot in. They're still working hard inside to get the inside completed. But there are some things we simply can't do in the mud outside. So we need some of that Colorado heat and sunshine to come pretty quick. This is a picture of the salon that will be completed as part of the CTE programming. So that's coming along very well. And then on the left is the welding classroom, which we got the welding booths in last week. And then the picture on the right is for construction trades. So all three of those spaces are for career and technical education. And that will open this fall. Northridge High School looks a lot like Greeley Central. It's just blown apart. We have walls taken out, floors stripped. You know, there's no lights. It's almost like a war zone in there. And this picture just shows you, because we don't have it done yet, the vestibule, new vestibule in the front of the school. So we're splitting that because it's existing into an entrance and an exit there from right to left. And then also reconfiguring the office so we have a reception window. And then that second double doors have passed through, similar to other schools. And then in the A Wing, is this A or B? Thank you. Like I said, the B Wing. This is the wing where we're doing a lot of career and technical education in this building in terms of technology classrooms, primary and maker spaces. And then a culinary arts kitchen back there in the upper left, which is quite a big deal, quite a big renovation into that building for their ProStar program. And then Scott Elementary School here. Boring picture here, looks Star Trek-ish. But if you look in the middle to the left, you'll see the entry there. So we will be working on the secure vestibule and office reconfiguration there as well as the off, the exit to the right. So we'll be working on that. And all these buildings are getting the classroom upgrades, carpet and paint, et cetera. And then in the middle of the building, if you remember, the old library is open. We will be putting Smart Lab in there like a lot of our other elementary schools have. So they have a Smart Lab area in there. And then also a conference room for small group room there in the middle. So that'll change that building quite a bit. Monford Elementary is also getting a new front. So we traded out two classrooms in the front. And we're gonna bring the office from the middle of the building to the front with an associated secure vestibule adjacent to it. And then behind that, in the building, so all carpet and paint all throughout the building. But then we are renovating the center part there where the clinic is. New conference room and then the Smart Lab. And art room will get new makeup. They already have a Smart Lab there, but we have to move it out, come in, renovate, and then move it back in. And then Shaw Sheen is getting in addition. And so on this picture, if you see from the center, kind of a C where there's no color. Look at the black and white. Those rooms are being renovated this summer, so new carpet and paint, et cetera. And then we're also starting the new additions. So the upper right-hand corner, four classroom addition will begin this summer. And then the office will be brought out of the middle. We'll start the new addition in the middle, that long breezeway. That will be done along with the addition in Thanksgiving. The classrooms in the C pattern will be done by the time school starts. And then next summer, we have to come back and renovate the middle, which will be where the Smart Lab will go. And again, we're getting rid of portables there. Fred Chartis School of Innovation, if you remember, they lost their, we lost the lease with Weld Works, had to move Fred Chartis out. UNC was nice enough to host Fred Chartis for this school year. And we had to move them out by the end of June. So we've done that. And they're gonna go into Cameron as Jefferson Junior High, the former tenant there, is moving out to Jefferson High School. And so we have a plan here that'll be this summer through the school year and be completed next summer of creating learning pods on the first floor and then the lower floor, large open spaces for them to do combined grade level work, which they like to do. And so we're working on getting started on that for this fall. But this will not be completed until next summer. And then prioritized maintenance. So all through the bond, you know, it was a major part of the bond was get rid of portable classrooms, fix our prioritized maintenance, which we were behind on. And so I created this spreadsheet. So I know you're not gonna be able to read it, but this is all about color. I'm visual. So anything on here with these columns, first column is roof replacement. Anything on there that was marked red, I started this my first year. If it was red, that meant that it was beyond its life expectancy and needed to be replaced. The next column was building automated systems and then boilers, chillers, cooling towers. All the stuff you need to keep your building dry and then to keep your building moving in the middle. And that's where we were really hurting in our deferred maintenance. And then I have some other, you know, columns out there. And the color red always means past its useful life. In some cases, five to 10 years past when it should have been replaced. And so with the passing of MLO and the bond, this is our present-day status. And what green means is it's been replaced in the last two to three years. And in most of these things, we have about a 20-year lifespan on these. So what this was gonna allow us to do, and you can see in the middle, I'll be honest, that exterior paint column, we're not hitting too bad because it's not as critical as doing learning spaces. And we'll have to come back and do that. But what this is, will do with all of this information is load it, we're loading it into our next replacement cycle for somebody else that's not got gray hair to handle down the road as we get to that deferred maintenance. So you know, guess what this chart shows you is that using MLO and bond money, we have made great strides in our facilities. And then this is a picture, just to some of my crew I want to acknowledge. Mandy Redfield's here, she's the Director of Facilities. Tony Chek is here, Director of IT. But in addition to their normal work that they do every single day to keep the district running, work orders, et cetera, they have had to get into blueprints. Tony's gotta look at every classroom we build, look at where the data drops. Are they in the right spot for that room? And so all these guys have taken on all of that extra work in all of these projects so far, and they've done an excellent job. We missed one or two things, one or two out of a million's not bad. So they've done a great job, and they need to be acknowledged for that. And then modular removal. You know, that was a big part of our Facility Master Plan when we had the community group together was one of our goals, was to do work where we can right-size our buildings for safety and security and honestly, to have equitable learning environments. If you're in a 700-foot, 700-square-foot classroom out in a modular, it's not the same learning experience as if you're in a close to 900-foot, square-foot classroom in a building, especially for security and safety. So with our original bond, this is our starting point in the district. We had 142 modular classrooms. Some people say temporary classrooms because they were brought on-site, some on wheels, some without wheels. But our starting point was 142. With our predicted work, not the extra work, but just what was in the bond language, and especially because we took down Greeley West and McCullough, which had more than half of those 47 temporary classrooms, we were predicted to remove 47% of our classrooms, which was 33% of 142, and then save the rest for the future. As we've been able to use proceeds and go through and do these additions, our present number that we have removed by the end of this summer is 80. So we will have taken off and demoed. We first started out looking, hey, does anybody wanna buy these? There's no market for them. So you know, it's basically take them and go. We did have a couple people come and get them. But for the most part, they get demolished. They're in horrible shape. When you look at the abatement that we have to do in them before we can move them, you know, the floors are rot, they're just horrible. So they're great to get rid of them. But we are ahead of our pace there. We have, over 50% are gone. So 56% of them are now in the dumpster by the end of this summer. So that's good for our kids. And then coming in June, so we're gonna be adding to the will-be. The will-be list is gonna be added. These schools here will have, by the end of the summer, architects on board for our work next summer. So that 14 projects will go to 19 before we stop driving, dropping some off. And then that will be the end of our bond cycle. One thing I want to show you is this sheet. Again, this is on our website. If you look up Facility Master Plan, Executive Summary, this is what the school board approved at the end of our Facility Master Planning process. In this document was the language for the bond issue of exactly what we were gonna do with the bond in terms of what we were gonna build, what we were gonna replace, and what we were gonna do with each building. Remember the bond sheets that every single building had. And so that Phase 1 really was Bond 1. Everything in that is crossed off. We have completed that. With our ability to use proceeds, we have come into Column 2 and 3 and really looked at our population in some of these buildings and knocked off some of those additions. We still have work to do. Also in there is recommendations for, if you remember, a billion in needs. We didn't have a billion in bonds. But you'll see in there, some things we didn't, weren't able to touch in buildings, like plumbing upgrades and electrical upgrades. So we have done quite a bit of LED lights in all of our new work. In our new additions have LED. But we need to come back through all of our buildings and do an LED light update. That's in Column 2. We need to do plumbing upgrades in some of our bathrooms across the district. We need to do probably some more safety and security in there. And so that is all lined out in there for the next bond. So what my point is, in showing you with this bond update and with this sheet, that everything we said we were gonna do with the bond, we have done. If you think back from the green, the red to the green spreadsheets, and what was on here in terms of large focus items, we have done and we've been able to accomplish more. And we have one more year in summer to go. And then we should be through the whole process. And then we'll reevaluate and start planning for the future. And that is it. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Henson. I think we have a few for you. First is Dr. Campos Spitsy.
Thank you again, Kent. I actually got a sneak peek at this presentation about a week ago when Kent Henson was kind enough to meet with me to talk about how our buildings have become more energy efficient with all these upgrades. And I was just very impressed with the fact that he took that master plan, he took so much ownership with that master plan to be checking off all these promises that were made to voters who passed that bond issue. And it's, literally, it just felt like his personal mission that he was gonna come through on every promise. And so I wanna thank you and your team for really coming through for the voters and for being good stewards of our taxpayer money.
Thank you. Our team has worked really hard.
Ms. Mash.
Well, this is one of my favorite updates that we get. And I love the pictures, so just thank you for all of that information. If you don't know this offhand, that's fine. I was just curious. I feel like when we were asking the voters to approve the bond, we said that we were about 5,000 seats over capacity. Does that sound about right?
No. I don't remember that. I don't remember that exact number that way. But it was a lot. It's 142 classrooms. You know, it's a lot of square footage, so.
So with all of these additions and even the ones that we hadn't planned on, that's gonna allow us to be able to keep our class sizes a little bit smaller and...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, class, the, the, well, I think, let me put it this way. The classrooms will be right-sized for the size of the class.
Right.
Because the class and the portable, the class size is small and the students are still there.
That's true. Yeah. And we're still going to see more shift in the next, I guess probably still three years because Twinton is continuing to roll up, right? They'll add additional students as they become a K7, K8, and same with Madison.
Yeah, those will both end up rolling up to K8s. Yeah.
Ms. Mash, any other questions from Mr. Henson? Comments from board members? I don't see any, Mr. Henson. I'll just echo those. Thank you. Thank you for, for the work. And I want to, want to also thank another person behind the scenes that always gets thanked, Mr. Tony Chek. I know he's, he's been integral in, in getting these buildings up. I wish everybody in our community could see that, that, that spreadsheet you created with where we were and how, how much needed to be replaced, how many things were, were past their expected life or life expectancy and, and how that red turned to green and what we've been able to do with this bond issue. And so just want to thank you, want to thank Mr. Tony Chek and all those on your team. But also want to thank our, our voters for passing this, this bond issue and making this possible. So.
Yeah, thank you. Only add one other thing, which I often do late, is that the reason we were able to go from red to green was because from the beginning, we prioritized exactly what needed to be done in each building. And so when we made those building bond sheets, we, the top priorities were on that list because that's what's important. If you think of Greeley Central coming up on 100 years, it's got boilers in there that are awesome. It's got a new roof. You know, it's going to be able to last a lot, a lot of years past its 100th anniversary coming up. So we really focused on the priorities of what we were behind on.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight is a call for elections and this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 calls for an election for the purpose of filling vacancies that will occur as current members' terms of office expire and direct the designated election official to notify the county clerk no later than July 28, 2023, that District 6 will participate in a coordinated election. The designated election official is further directed to publish a call for nominations no later than August 24, 2023 in the Greeley Tribune. Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the motion? Sing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on the agenda is to designate an election official and this is also an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 designates Amy Lemon as the District Election Official and Lindsay Richards as the Alternate Election Official for the November 2023 election.
Second. Thank you all. Any questions or comments on this one? Sing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon, and thank you for agreeing to be our designated election official. Next on our agenda are the revisions to Policy DJE bidding procedures. And this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves revisions to Policy DJE bidding procedures as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch is there. This looks pretty straightforward to me, but is there anything you need to say about this one? Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And next, we also have revisions to Policies GCO Evaluation of Licensed Personnel. And this is an action item as well.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves revisions to Policy GCO Evaluation of Licensed Personnel as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Next on the agenda, we have a resolution for superintendent spending authority over summer. This is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the resolution to authorize delegating authority to superintendent for continuing operations during summer months. Second.
Thank you both. Any comments or questions from board members? Sing none. I'll just offer a quick explanation for this. This is because of that bond presentation you just saw there. A lot of those contracts are pretty big. Normally, our superintendent's spending authority is, is not that great. It'd be great by a lot of standards, but it, but in comparison to what is needed for the bond, it's not that great. And so we need, because we will not be meeting to approve contracts in the month of July, we'll need her to, to approve those for us. And so that is why that's before us. And Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And finally, tonight, we have our Board of Education review of book appeals. And the first book appeal that we have is extremely loud and incredibly close. I just want to, to remind us of, of what, what this is tonight. Most, most of what we do, again, is legislative. But occasionally we do enter into, we function as a quasi judicial body, meaning we make judicial decisions. And this is the case with, with book reviews, that they are, they are books that have been appealed and they have been reviewed by, by a committee. And committees made a decision and the superintendent has upheld that decision and that decision has been appealed to us. And so we are functioning in that quasi judicial capacity tonight. For appellate purposes, this is not an opportunity to speak on whatever you would like, but is normally, which is normally the case in public comment during regularly scheduled board meetings. This is, is only to speak about whether this particular book belongs in District 6 libraries. To the extent that the conversation veers off into something that's not about this book or about this appeal, I will stop you. We'll cut off your microphone. Your voice is very important and we want to make sure that the record is clear so that you are heard and the Board of Education is able to make an informed decision on the law and policy of this board. To that extent, we'll ask the public and the appellants for your cooperation to speak. Be respectful to speak to the issue that is before the board today. Any behavior intended to interrupt or the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be allowed by any person in the boardroom. It is requested that when appellants address the board, comments are not to be directed personally to or at against a board member or staff member, but rather directed to the issue on the appeal. The appellant comments will be limited to specific issues identified in the appeals. Again, the board president may redirect or otherwise stop you from speaking if comments deviate from the issues in front of the board. It's important to keep in mind, some of the mature content contained in the book may be inappropriate for young audiences, particularly for kindergarten or elementary age students. This is a public meeting and as such, young children may be in attendance or otherwise have access to the recording. However, accordingly, during the appeal, appellants are prohibited from reading passages from the book. However, the appellants are permitted to reference page numbers and paragraphs for the board's consideration. Additionally, time will be provided for district administration to share a summary of the book review committee's process and the recommendations. And from my understanding, again, Mr. West Tuttle will speak on behalf of the book review committee and will inform the board about the selection and review process and be available to answer any questions the Board of Education might have. On completion of the appeal hearing, the Board of Education will discuss the merits of the arguments on the appeals in open session. And I suggest the board has a discussion that reflects on what it's heard and learned during the appeals hearing to taking, to taking action. So just having, having read that and reminding everybody of what, what, what we're doing and how we want, want to do that. We, we are going to hear from our appellants first on this book, Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close. I do believe our first appellant, and we only have one, I think, intended tonight. It's Ms. Sonia Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller. You'll have a couple of minutes to, to summarize your, your thoughts and then you may receive questions from board members.
Book Review 3 and 4, you'll decide on tonight. Moral values abandoned, spine still out of sight. How tired you must be of doing this work, but favors are due and you've accepted the perks. That's all I've got so far. Self-harm, grief, gender confusion, racism, trauma, your mom's a whore. I mean, we know you're going to vote yes on all of this. So I don't know why you're wasting everybody's time. I don't know why I'm wasting your time. I don't know why you're wasting our time. You're trying to give porn to children. You're trying to pervert our children. You're trying to turn them gay. You're trying to do all kinds of disgusting stuff, you sodomites.
Ms. Miller, you're out of order. You're just trying to wear us down. Do you have any, do you have anything to add to, to the appeal that you gave us? We have your written appeal. Do you have anything else to clarify?
Other than the fact that you guys are perverts?
Ms. Miller, you're out of order. Do you have anything to add to your?
Do you have any questions for me about this book?
Okay, I'll, I'll assume you're done. Are there any questions for Ms. Miller?
Ms. Miller, did you read the book?
You know what? I'm so tired of that question. I don't have to read an entire book, an entire book to know that there are parts in it that children shouldn't read. You're disgusting, Pappas. You're so gross.
Ms. Miller, you're out of order.
You give grandkids books about porn, about male masturbation. You!
Can we cut Ms. Miller's microphone and escort Ms. Miller? You're out of order, Ms. Miller. You can find your way out. Thank you. Ms. Miller, you can sit down. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, I resent you saying that about me and how I interact with my grandchildren.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. West Tuttle. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Tuttle. Do you present to us?
All right. I've abbreviated down the presentation from previous because you've heard the process of the committee and that kind of stuff. But I just want to highlight a few things related to that work as well as in the committee's recommendation. Extremely loud and incredibly close. There were 175 complainants that turned in forms, multiple forms from each one of the complainants. Many of them did based on multiple sites that this was housed at. But like I said, 175 complainants did submit forms. On the committee, again, we want to neutral people. We want people not on either extreme, but we want people to come into this process and be able to review the book. They do read the entire book. And the committee this time is made up with four community, community members, five parents, again, from DAC, cross-representation of our district, two recent graduates, six teachers, four district administrators, and then two facilitators, Nate and myself. The context, where did this book exist? Right now, this book exists at Greeley Central High School, Northridge High School, and Brentwood Middle School. What is our recommendation after the process that we went through? The committee recommends that the book continues to remain openly available in middle school and high school libraries without any restrictions. There's 19 different statements there that all align directly to the criteria that we use to evaluate the book. And so you can see those, I know you can't read them in that screen, but in the full report, they're listed there. Additionally, on the committee's rationale, although Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close contains complex themes and a few passages containing sexual content, in consideration of the literary value of the material as a whole, the committee finds the book provides students the opportunity to read a text which furthers their access to themes or morality, consciousness, communication, representation of neurodiversity, mental illness, and identity, as well as an exploration of tragedy from a personal viewpoint. Those who don't know, the book is based on 9/11 and a boy who lost his father. And so that's kind of the context of this whole thing. Dr. Deirdre Pilch then went on and said the committee's recommendation stands and again reminded parents that they always have the option to limit their students' access to whether it be the books in, in the entire library or specifically any book that they want to not permit their child to read. They always have that decision ability within our system. So that's our recommendation for that first book.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Are there any questions for Mr. Tuttle? Mr. Tuttle, I don't see any. So I'll let you sit down. There any questions, comments from board members? On the book? Someone like to make a motion? I'm not seeing any comments.
I would like to make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 upholds the superintendent's decision regarding the recommendation of the book review committee for Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close by Jonathan Safranfor based on the rationale included in the book review committee's findings and recommendations.
There's a second. Thank you. Ms. Mash? Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Not seeing any. I will just, I'll just state that as I read the book, the, the term that we are always, or what we're looking for is pervasive vulgarity. That, that is legally what we need to see to remove a book. And there's, there is no pervasive vulgarity in this book. And so, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Camp, excuse me, Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Nay.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-1.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next tonight, final agenda item is the Board of Education review of book appeals. And this is on The Kite Runner. And first tonight, I won't read what I read before. Hopefully everyone absorbed that. But tonight first, we need to hear from our first appellant and it's Ms. Sarah Carlson. Welcome, Ms. Carlson. You'll have two minutes just to give a, a summary of, of, of your appeal of this. And then board members may want to ask you some questions.
Sure. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Carlson. I am one of the appellants against the book review committee's decision on Kite Runner. My biggest question at this point in the process, I've summarized my, you know, thoughts on it before. My biggest question is why keep such a controversial book when there are so many other good resources out there that also address these difficult topics that we do want to expose our students to? I did just a real quick Google search this afternoon and there are plenty of sites out there that have lists on Afghani culture books that are appropriate for students and do not create this tension and controversy. They discuss interpersonal relationships, gender studies, history and oppression under the Taliban, life as refugees, social hierarchies. All of the, the main points that the book review committee did bring forward that we do want to expose the students to, but just not doing so with the problems that we've seen with The Kite Runner. I do think that if we do introduce any of these new books, that they, of course, be screened in just the same way. This book, The Kite Runner, it really reminds me of a story that I was told when I was younger of a mother who made brownies for her son when he got home from school. And she added all the good ingredients in them, you know, eggs, flour, cocoa powder. And, but she added one special ingredient. And her son came home from school and smelled the brownies and said, Mama, Mama, may I please have a brownie? She said, absolutely, but I, I have to warn you, there is one special ingredient in it. I added just a tiny bit of dog poop in the brownies. Now, do you think the child ate that? No, of course not. And that's the same thing with these books, The Kite Runner specifically. You know, there is a. there is a, a very vulgar scene and vulgar language in it, as we've stated. Um, but why do we expect students to ingest things that might have potential good ingredients to them, but still in the end have scenes of dog poop? Um, in my opinion, keeping books like The Kite Runner, it's just lazy research, lazy teaching, and I think as parents, staff, you know, we can do so much better and find so much better resources out there. It really doesn't make sense to keep it. So, that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. See if we have any questions from our board members.
Ms. Carlson, did you read The Kite Runner?
I did at UNC in my Asian American literature class, and then we had to, um, watch the movie too in class.
Any other questions for Ms. Carlson? Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Carlson. We appreciate you. Um, next tonight, uh, we have another appellant, Ms. Stacy Castillo. Welcome, Ms. Castillo. Uh, if you will, just for two minutes, maybe summarize the, the appeal, and then we'll let, uh, see if there are any questions for you from board members. Thank you.
Yes. Um, so I would first just like to point out that, um, at the last book review, um, it was stated that this is a First Amendment violation, but it sounds kind of like we're picking and choosing when it is, because it is a violation of my First Amendment, right, to actually read passages from this book. So if we are talking that this is a First Amendment violation, to just ask parents to opt in instead of having to opt out, I know I've personally already sent three emails, um, to opt my children out of books, and that's going to get overloaded really quick. Um, I have a list that I have been reviewing and reading each and every book on that list myself, and that's going to become very, you know, we're killing each other with bureaucracy. We obviously know that people are sick of jumping through these hoops. That's why we are only having two to four people appeal the decisions. The community members don't see the purpose because they are not being heard. They are being mocked. They are being bullied and intimidated and preyed upon by people who think that they are weaker. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Any questions from board members? Ms. Castillo, I don't see any, and I don't have any questions, so you, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Tuttle, I invite you up to speak and give us your presentation.
All right. Again, abbreviated version for you, um, for Kite Runner. We had 170 complainants. If you remember back in December when we had all the complainants submitted, we started with the book that had the, the largest number of complainants submitted, and we're working our way down. So you'll see each one gets a little bit smaller there. We did have two people sign up for, to come and speak to the committee this time, and so that was a great opportunity to, again, to hear a different perspective and, and just make sure that we were aware of the concerns being brought forward. The committee membership again on this one, we had six community members. You'll see an additional couple there, um, four parents, one of the five was not able to do it this time period due to some family obligations, three recent graduates. We added another recent graduate from our system, um, that all three of those are currently enrolled in colleges and universities in the area, four teachers, four district administrators, and two facilitators. Again, trying to make sure we have that broad representation. Where does Kite Runner exist right now? It's at Greeley Central, Greeley West, and Northridge High School. And again, we, our committee's recommendation, the committee recommends that the book continues to remain openly available in high school libraries without any restriction. The rationale's in there's a, a large number of them, 33 statements tied to those criteria. The committee went on to say, it's, it, they do feel that it is educationally suitable for high school students. That second paragraph that I just want to highlight, um, the sexual assault scene in Kite Runner is undoubtedly a tragic and challenging passage to read. However, to simply to describe the scene as pornographic or to otherwise single-mindedly focus on the passage as a primary reason to restrict the book undermines the complexities that form from the narrator's experiences. The narrator's failure to protect his friend, to protect his friend from a sexual assault, and his subsequent guilt and shame over that failure is critical to the story and extremely important to understand the trajectory of the narrator's life. Dr. Pilch's decision was to, um, recommend, that supports the committee's recommendation with the following amendment. So she did add an amendment there that this novel shall not be selected or purchased for inclusion in any of our K-8 libraries. So that would include our K-8, our middle school, and our elementary school libraries. And she also, again, reminded parents of that same option that they always have. Any questions?
We do have a question for you, uh, Mr. Tuttle. Mr. Norwood?
Mr. Tuttle, thank you for the time and effort that you and the book committee have put in on these. I just had one real quick question. Would it be possible to take some of the books, and I know we talked about this at another meeting, and put them on either Is It Infinite Campus or Destiny, and then when the, the parent and the student come in for registration, they could make the decision about the books then? Would that be a discussion or not?
That is something that you guys could recommend, um, for parents to do. The question would be what books do we put on that list? But that is something that could be done within Infinite Campus and Destiny.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tuttle? All right, Mr. Tuttle, we'll let you, let you sit down, uh, and open this up for, for discussion for board members. Ms. Mash?
Um, I just would like to speak to this book. Um, I found this book to be full of the following, uh, very positive themes. Um, there's an incredibly selfless character, um, just sacrificial in every way that he loves, uh, another character. There is courage, friendship, truth, brotherly love, fatherly love, and ultimately, this is a story of redemption, of, um, you know, one, one character struggles the entire story with what he did or actually did not do to step in and, and prevent the, a terrible act from happening. Um, and it, it really shows, you know, the, the intense, deep struggles that he goes through. Um, then he moves to a different country. Um, but ultimately, he receives forgiveness from his brother. He, um, you know, is able to go and rescue his brother's son. It, um, you know, I, I guess, obviously, we are all bringing our own personal, um, perspectives. My, my parenting, uh, style or, or goals, I guess, are to process the world with my children instead of protecting them from every single bad thing that might happen. And, um, you know, that, that's what, that's what being human is. We, we get to experience a very wide range of emotions, and we're going to have intense regrets sometimes. Bad things may happen to us or to people we know. Um, but the beauty of the art of storytelling is to share your experience so that it could either be a warning to another person, it could be a way for that person to, to see how someone was able to handle a bad thing, to move through it. I know that the statistic for sexual violence against women is one in four women will experience a sexual violent, um, will have an, uh, that experience in their lifetime. I don't know what it is for men, but as much as it breaks my heart to know, our, our students have experienced some very terrible things, and it, it could potentially be helpful for them to, to read a story of redemption, um, or to be a good friend to someone else. So, uh, to me, you can't have beauty often without the bad or without the death. Um, and, and I, I would say that that is also, you know, that is the story of, of the gospel and of the Bible, um, life out of death, redemption out of tragedy. That's why I will uphold this recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Not seeing any. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six upholds the superintendent's decision regarding the recommendation of the book review committee for Kite Runner by Khalid Hosni, based on the rationale included in the book, review committee's findings and recommendations, and the superintendent's additional restriction for purchasing, purchasing the novel at lower levels. Second.
Is there any discussion or question on the motion? Sing none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Nay.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Motion carries five one.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. That is all the business, uh, that we have tonight, so thank you for joining us, whether you're here in person or, or online. This meeting is now adjourned.